I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Pledge of Allegiance. Jack T. El.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order, roll call, everyone is here except Sandy and she's been excused. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second?
Sort of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment? Approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2014, regular board meeting.
So move for approval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications Day.
Okay, donations, we have a number, again, a number, nice donations, Alinas donated $300 for school supplies to needy children, that goes through the school social worker. We had a parent donate tenor saxophone valued at $350 to the middle school band. Target, two cash donations, $68.28 to Wapaka Middle School and $292.11 to the high school. And once again, the annual contribution towards our counteract program from the foundry of $700.
Dave?
Yes?
Is there any way that we can put it out to the public about the band instruments that end up at the end of their school year, that they can indicate that they have them and they like, if they want to give them back to the school, they get a deduction?
I know when they first started that program, there was a newspaper article about it, they talked to it, to us about it at the board meeting, since then, they trickle in, someone's telling someone, but I don't know how they do it.
You know, it would seem to me that would be, I mean, it would be an easy thing to do.
There have to be more than one a month sitting out there.
Well, 350.
Yeah.
And you've got one or two kids that need them, it's...
More.
Right. Mr. Room, will you talk to Mr. Viva and see if, get that word out, or find out how he does that?
Yep.
Need a motion to accept all the donations.
Is there a motion to accept all the donations?
To approve with appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recognition. School Board Appreciation Week is last week, I believe.
It was.
Was last week. And I don't know that School Board Association has done this in the past, I think it's about time. I would just like, it's okay with you, I'd like to read it. Whereas Wapaka School Board recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Wapaka community appreciates the vital role played by the local school board which establishes policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice enabling our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local educational interests to state, federal government, and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren and communities' future. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district, now therefore be it resolved that October 5th through October 11th, 2014 is proclaimed as Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
Often goes unrecognized, I think it's important that it does get recognized. In addition to that, this current school week is National School Lunch Week. And we have proclamation which is a little bit longer, what I'd like to read is the parts that pertain to our local employees, the last two. Whereas the success of this effort is due largely to resourceful and creative local food service administrators, managers, and staff working in cooperation with parents, teachers, community groups, governmental personnel, and students. And in recognition of the contribution of the National School Lunch Program, Congress has designated the week beginning with the second Sunday in October of each year as National School Lunch Week, and has requested the President to issue an annual proclamation calling for an appropriate observance. Therefore be it resolved that Tony Evers, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, does hereby proclaim October 13th-17th as National School Lunch Week. So congratulations to Darf Flugart and her staff.
She isn't here today.
She's not.
Either are cookies. Stop.
Better not.
Any thank yous?
No.
School visits.
Anybody have one other than me?
I do.
I do.
There you go. Bob, you want to start off?
Sure. I actually did two things this month. I was part of the homecoming festivities and judged the skits and the hall decorations and floats, and it was really fun to be part of homecoming this year. Kids did a great job, it was wonderful that the staff actually got a skate this year. And it was really, I think that's really important, that the staff jump in and show their school spirit too. So it was really, it was really a fun week for the kids and thanks to all who were involved, it was really a fun experience. Today, I visited the learning center because that was my assignment for the month. So I visited the third and fourth grade wing and started in Mr. Warren's room and they had just returned Ashley from a walk to the courthouse. And they and Mrs. Waldschmidt's class had liter-, it was so windy today, they wondered if they could fly there. But they went and I had quite a discussion with both classrooms afterward. Mr. Warren's class talked a lot about court reporters and the difference between the prosecution and the defendant, and so they learned a lot of new vocabulary and had a real appreciation for the legal system. Mrs. Waldschmidt's class asked me the question, and I might put this to you, Mr. Shamo, why when people enter a courtroom do they have to remove their hats?
Hundred-year-old rule.
Because? What does it start with? I won't put you on the spot. The warriors back in the day, see?
I mean, it's way past me.
I know, it's actually older than you.
We never have people with hats.
Well, it's older than you. It goes back to the early days when, like crusade days, when people wore helmets and they would go into courtrooms, if they had a helmet on or a hat on, it meant that they were there to fight. And so they had to remove their helmets and put it down to show that they were trying to come up with a peaceful way to resolve their differences. And that tradition has continued ever since. So there you go. So leave it to third graders to teach me that. Mrs. Saransky's group was doing awesome math project. It was called the magic cube where they were actually learning the connection between multiplication and division. It was really interesting to see how the two go together and how they would slip from multiplication into division so easily and get the answers. So it was quite a process and they were very proud to show me what they could do. Mrs. Lemkill's class was getting ready because they're going to SWAS, Central Environmental Station, next week. So Mrs. Eastland's husband had cut out a little birch trunk, you know, things from a tree? What do you call those? You know, little slices of a tree, bark or trunk. And they had burped their names onto it, each of them. Put a hole in it, a string on it, and those were going to be their name tags for their trip next week. It's a two-day trip. They were really excited, telling me they were going to learn about pioneers in the state of Wisconsin and whatever. So they've really been planning well and it showed that there's a lot of preparation into something like this, it's not just put the kids in a bus and take them there. That there's a lot of meaningful preparation that takes place first to make the experience more meaningful. So it was really interesting. Then I was in Mrs. Tamars's class and we were coming down the wind today and how there were branches and things that came down outside the school and so we were all looking at those as the wind was flying around. So anyway, it was a great, it was a great visit. And kudos to the third and fourth grade teachers, they do a great job. Thanks.
Okay, well, I had, I went to two different places. I bumped into John Kinnear the other day, if you remember, John Kinnear was the engineer who helped us with our WLC project as far as the new driving pattern and whatnot. And he asked me if I had seen it and I said, yes, I had, I'd been over there back just shortly after it was done. But I had not been over there when it was actually in use with the, you know, cars and buses and people. So I thought to you that, he said, you ought to go over and take a look, it really seems to work well. And so I did, I went over this morning and just to observe, and of course, my wife warned me that I'd be that old guy sitting in a car at an elementary school, get arrested. But it turned out I wasn't arrested and everything turned out fine. But it was interesting to see, but you're on a watch. But the signage and the way people moved and it seemed everybody, of course, it was rainy and kind of a crummy morning as you all remember, so people were quick to get in out of the weather. But it was, it was fun to see it in action and it does seem to work well. And I assume from the WLC staff that they think it works well too. But I did that. Then the other thing I did is I went over to Trinity because I wanted to see one of the 4K classes. So I went over there this morning and was introduced to the staff. And I didn't really forget, but I guess in a way I did, I came around 11 o'clock and I wasn't thinking. And that's when they, the children leave, so it was kind of in between. And the one thing though that I observed that I was really fun, was fun for me to see, I mean, the parents were there picking up children and they were leaving. But also, for those of you who know Trinity, is also the site of our senior nutrition center. So there were a lot of older people coming in to Trinity at the same time in the basement about 11 o'clock. So there's this interaction between four-year-olds and nine-year-olds. That was fun to see, and they must do it on a pretty regular basis because a lot of the older people knew some of the kids and they seemed to know some of the older people. And it was just a kind of a neat experience to see the interaction between, which doesn't happen very often, quite frankly. So that was fun. And I had a chance to visit with the staff a little after the kids left and talked about it, looked at their facilities and their, our teacher, Molly, I can't remember her last name.
Harris.
Thank you, Molly Harris, we chatted for quite a while about her students and what she's doing with them, the curriculum and all that sort of good thing. And it was just fun to see. First time I had ever been in a, not only 4K, but a classroom that was off-campus. And it was, it was really nice. So it was fun.
Ladies first.
Well, I didn't do a school visit, but I just wanted to report briefly that we had the first board meeting last night for the Wapaka YMCA board, they got put together. We kind of learned about the history of the YMCA, it started in 1844 in London with 12 guys who wanted to get together, it was part of a Bible study. And it was pretty interesting just to hear the history and how it's all transitioned to what it is today. They talked about the action plan of transitioning the health centers to a YMCA and they're going to have a grand opening on December 13th out at the Highway 22 facility. And they're going to be shut down for a couple of weeks just to get some new equipment and do some updates and then they'll have a grand opening. You know, they're kind of doing this now, saying immediately after the holidays, everybody's looking to get in shape. And Randy O'Connell, the general manager, said then by February 1st it all, you know, goes belly up. It's gum-pull there for a marketing zone. I was interested, I went on their website and was kind of looking at their programming and they have so much with childcare. They are 4K sites, you know, in various places and, you know, I just got to thinking that the schools just can't keep doing it all and being all things to all people and so it'll be a nice partnership with the Y and I kind of talked to them about that last night with, you know, before-school programming and after-school programming and the need for tutoring and, you know, all of those kinds of things. So it'll really be fun, I think, to partner with them and make sure that all the needs are met in this area. And it was also interesting to hear that they don't do this partnership with everybody who asks. They kind of talked about a few other districts where, or other cities, who wanted to partner with the YMCA but for various reasons didn't follow through with that. So, you know, Wapaka is one of the lucky ones and also has a lot of support, as you guys know, from Rook Johnson and great facilities and yeah, I just think it's gonna, it's gonna go well. So one of the things they talked about was corporate rates. With, we have enough people in our school district to warrant a corporate rate. So I don't know, Randy said he talked to Mike Waldschmidt about the possibility because I talked about, you know, we're all into wellness and all of that and if that's something that, you know, we might want to look at. Of course, it's a cost to the district as well as a cost to staff, but something to think about.
Does it have to be a cost to the district? When we can get a corporate rate, that staff can participate in cheaper rates, is that...
Possibly, the information I had, and I just kind of, you know, glanced at it, but it was that the district pays 15%.
I see.
And then staff pays the rest, but I would assume there's all kinds of equations you can put together.
We have to look into that as part of our laws.
Right, yeah. Yeah, well, stay tuned.
Thanks for serving on that board as a representative.
Yeah, it's a great cross-section of Wapaka people. It'll be fun.
Unlike Betty, I did not go to the assigned place I was supposed to go, but I had a few minutes one day and I went over to the high school. And the first thing I did was I went in and saw Kira Morrissey was rehearsing the magicals and it was the first time that she had had all four groups sing together. Sounded beautiful to me, but she had little things that she picked out. One of the things I thought was interesting, her father is a composer and they're going to New York this spring. And she was asking the kids for ideas about subject matter for a piece that he would compose specifically for them that they could sing when they go for a trip. And I thought that was really nice, I mean, they had something original. And she was asking the kids if they would, you know, give some thought to whatever, some kind of inspirational thing for him to work on. And then I went down and talked to Mark Kreszek, he was working on some things in his room, he didn't have any students, but he was talking to me about his budget and how it's, he's having more and more difficulty with his budget because his instruments are becoming older and older and he's paying a lot for repairs and music is more and more expensive and, you know, he was gonna send me an email, I've not gotten it yet. But he was concerned that maybe the budget wasn't enough. When I get that email, I'll share it with you regarding what he thinks would be more appropriate. Oh, he also told me about, he had, he usually has a jazz group that he meets with before school at 7:00. And now he has so many kids that he has two jazz groups. And then he also has two combination groups. So four mornings a week, he's meeting kids at 7:00 to play traditional music, jazz, and so forth. So that was pretty interesting. And also with that, I noticed in the consent agenda that there's a, on the dashboard, there was a thing about the middle school and how the percentage of kids, you know, throughout the middle school has increased, especially this year for some reason. I don't know, I haven't looked at that, but it's significant. There's a, it's like 60% of the total middle school are in band. And last year it was significantly lower for some reason, but this year it's higher. So I suppose it depends on what kids are there, but kind of interesting. But it's more a band program than what I had in mind.
It is.
I had the opportunity to go to the chain school, spend a fair amount of time just going through the facility. It continues to be in good condition considering its age. I didn't see any things of specific concern. Then went to Mr. Krasinski's class, first grade, they were working on reading when I got there. Very interesting how he was drawing the different students into the process that they were doing. It wasn't self-reading by any means, it was all up on the whiteboard. And he would have them go through the sentence forward and then go backwards to make sure it wasn't just a memory process that they were memorizing the words and then mix them up and he would have one of the students with a pointer, selecting from cards in a specific order, who had to answer the various questions. After that, they then went into what was wrong with it, the "I" was not capitalized at the beginning of the sentence, there was no period, things like that. And just the way he was drawing the students into the process, I found very interesting. I then went to Mrs. Zalinski's first grade class, they were working on math. Heard a term I hadn't used before in addition and that's partners. I hadn't heard it used before, but they have an unknown box, which is what you're trying to solve, whether it's before or after the equals mark. They were also working on going from a linear to horizontal process where another thing I didn't know, you take the equals and you make a line, is how you change it to a vertical. They're also using circles to be kind of a proof of their equation. And so it's just a different way than I remember, well, I don't really remember how it worked. It's a different process than I recall. Then I went upstairs to second grade class, Mrs. Ristow, and they were working on creative writing and a number of the students were on their first draft, some were on the second draft. The majority were working together on their stories. All were using or about to begin using PCs or Chromebooks. So the Chromebooks that we have for the district are obviously getting used. I was able to watch one of the students working on a PC on theirs. They would have who this was being written for, it might be their parent, it might be a friend. They will be doing illustration, they hadn't started that yet, so I'm not sure exactly how they'll do that, if that's with the computer itself and graphics or that. But it was interesting to watch them. A large number of them were very comfortable with PCs. Just really amazes me at sometimes at that level at second grade that they've moved along that far. So very much enjoyed it. One comment that I'd like to add to Betty's on homecoming, and that was while I was at the coronation, I did not make the pep rally, but was told that the administration handled the pep rally very, very well. There's usually, how would you say this?
Problems.
At times, a challenge between the upperclassmen and the freshmen as to how the freshmen are received with some of the activities in the pep rally. And I would have firsthand knowledge of that, having both a sophomore and a freshman and knowing what the sophomore might have in common for the freshman to be. But the administration hit that in the bud, they let them have one large boo or whatever the case may be and stepped in and said, now we're going to be talking about school unity. So while it may not be the video that you had of school spirit, apparently that did indeed work very effectively. So my compliments on that.
I went, I was also at coronation and I was there to judge Betty's performance. And it was interesting because it's been a few years since I was there. And I'm used to skits in person. And, you know, you walk in there and this big screen is up there. And I didn't think the juniors were ever going to finish. I mean, but it was interesting how they did all that and, you know, it's, that's pretty neat that they can do that. I didn't understand any of it, but it was over my head. But that was fun. I also went to the learning center today. And I wanted to see the visitors' parking area and I thought it was working very well. On the way out, is there supposed to be a stop sign where you go onto that road? Could, the road that gets into, like it's going past to the church?
Shoemaker.
Yes. I don't think there's a stop sign.
There was at one time, I believe, or at least I saw it.
Have to make the loop around and you're on your way out.
When you, when you get, when you get to Shoemaker Road, I didn't see a stop sign. Now, maybe there's a stop sign on the other way from the, from the church and... But I don't know that. Maybe I just missed it.
Does there need to be one? I mean, there's not much traffic coming from...
But if there's not one coming from the church and not one from our building, it could be a problem.
I think there is one from the church, I remember when I drove out there because I don't think there's nearly as much traffic and they probably didn't put one so that it flows. Yeah, I remember that too.
I just, I mean, is that, is that the way it should be?
We'll see, we'll watch and see.
As long as the Baptists stop, it's fine.
That's what we know attorneys for. Come on. Well, I then went into the school and at that point in time, the wind had taken care of two or three cars. One of the substitute teachers lost hers completely, that one of the, in the staff parking lot, some of those aspen trees that were real tall, they aren't tall anymore. And one of them had a direct hit and I assume our insurance will...
Tough day for a son.
Help her, well, she'll get a new car. But anyway, I talked to, what's his name, Jim Frye?
Friar.
Friar. And he said he would be more than willing on his own time to come and take some of those down. And I assumed that that would be a good idea because it's just an accident waiting to happen. He also indicated there were some trees elsewhere on our facilities where they were old oak trees and again, he'd be willing to take them down and take the, take the wood and it's just something to, for no cost. It might be something to consider. And I said, sound...
Just a comment on the car that was destroyed today. There's gonna be some discussion whether that was an act of God and who's insurance company is gonna take care of it.
Aye.
I didn't see God when they were...
Why would that be, putting the winter off?
Right.
But that's an act of God.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a, and there's a paragraph in most insurance...
It wasn't a clearly dead tree that was ready to fall over.
It looks...
So there wasn't negligence on our part by not taking it down.
Right. But maybe.
That's up to the insurance companies to talk about.
Well, on the positive side, when I went to Mrs. Tamars's class, her car was one that was involved. And, you know, I said I'm really...
She said it wasn't that bad.
Well, I know, but I, you know, said I was sorry and, you know, whatever. I was just amazed at the positive attitude around there today. All the teachers, you know, they were all talking about it, said, you know what, we're just grateful that there weren't children involved, that no one's hurt their cars. So I was just really impressed with the attitude about the whole thing and how they were very positive and kept saying to their students that this is a good thing and, you know, there's always a brighter side, so. Thanks for that.
Good. Committee Action Report.
Some future dates, October 28th, which is a Tuesday, that will be our budget hearing, 5:30 PM in this room. November 8th, which is a Saturday, WSB...
What is the first tour?
It's a Tuesday, I'll do the budget hearing at 5:30. What date, 28th of October? Make sure that's on your calendar or... Make sure that's on your calendar already.
Probably.
Saturday, November 8th, WSB Legislative Advocacy Conference in Stevens Point. If anyone would like to attend that, let me know. And then our next regular school board meeting, Tuesday, November 11th, 5:45 PM in this room. Next item is the Third Friday Enrollment Report. Seems like I've talked about this to a lot of people so far. And you've had a chance to look at it. A couple of things I would just like to point out. And we put a history on here from 2007. I know that's a little bit hard to read where you are. Carl, this is in the budget packet, right?
It's actually in the board packet also.
Okay. Well, you know, we've got a history from 2007 through the Third Friday in September of 2014. And you'll notice one thing is that this year we've added the 4K, so those numbers are there. You'll notice back in 2012, we moved the fifth graders from the WLC to the middle school. So those numbers are, have to take into account those changes. But some of the more drastic things I'd like to point out, our total pupil enrollment between Third Friday and September of last year, Third Friday and September of this year, we've gone up 34 students. But that's with the understanding that we already added 124 four-year-old kindergarten students. So the net is up because of the addition of 4K, but we've really lost population on a carry-forward method. Another thing that's, we've spent a number of years watching this low enrollment trend go through the learning center and then through the middle school and enter into the high school, and it's really evident now showing up. If you look at the number of students we had in 2007 at the high school, 864. Number of students we have this year in the high school, 675. Almost 200 student difference, which is really a class, what used to be a class. Instead of, we've got 200 in each class, now we've got 350. Significant to three, 150 in each class. And then you can cast those numbers forward and see that we're going to lose 175 seniors at the end of this year. We'll pick up 153 eighth graders, so we're going to lose another 22 in the total at the high school for next year. And then pick up 177. But then we're back to the 150s for a couple of years, and then we get into the 130s for two years, the third and fourth, current third and fourth grade classes. So-
If you're losing that many, do you lose teachers also then?
Well, I've asked for a report on how many teachers we had back in 2007, 2005 or so when we were at our peak. We certainly have fewer teachers now than we did then. We've added some programs, so their teachers added back in without necessarily having students. But as we move through, we kept, you remember when we were laying off the elementary and we got to middle school and through attrition as well as, we've been able to handle most of it through attrition. But I would like to report at the budget hearing how many actual teachers we have, we are down from the time that we were at the peak. And we'll look at that in detail at each building at that time. We'll talk about a little bit at the budget part tonight, but what's really significant in these numbers, these numbers affect both our revenue cap and they affect state aid at a certain, different times of the year and different, affect in different ways. But one of the, if you tie these numbers in with state aid, you know we lost $500,000 in state aid this year. Part of the reason for that is the state aid formula takes into account your total valuation of property and divides that by the number of students to determine how much property value you have behind each student. So even if our property value were to stay the same, and our enrollment goes down, we're becoming richer because we have more property value behind each student. So that's one of the reasons we're losing state aid over the last four or five years to the tune of about $4 million. So the formula is, formula makes it look like we're becoming richer in property value, and in fact, we're pretty much staying the same from the year to year. So one of the things I keep preaching to whoever will listen is that we need to adjust that state aid formula and take ability to pay and poverty levels and things like that more into account. And hopefully we can make some progress on that with the legislature.
You've been looking for that year for 10 years.
I've been, I know, but sometimes you got to start.
Again.
Sometimes you get the right year. As you know, I had a presentation at the Crohn's Academy last night. They're a pretty good audience, and I did talk about this. But fortunately, Senator Luther Olson was in the audience, so I was able to share some of my concerns and thoughts with the audience and he at the same time. Okay, good.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure. You're welcome. Monitoring. We are fortunate to have the Crohn's Trail Crew with us, or part of it at least, with us tonight. We're going to introduce Darren Mann and Anne Casamas.
Casamas.
So cheers.
Take it away.
Just to give a little, the board knows that we entered in agreement with the county in order to use our trail system for a winter trail. And that's as much as you know about it at this time, I think, unless you read more in the paper. Okay.
Is that computer there for PowerPoint?
You can use it.
I can load. I'm just loading it down. I think I'm going to do the majority of the talking. I'm Anne Casamas. I work for Willpack County Park, and I'm also part of Crohn's Trail Crew. And I was asked to just give you guys some background information on our group and then on our winter trail programs. We'll go fairly quickly here, and if you guys have any questions, just let me know. Oh, I guess so. No. All right, so Crohn's Trail Crew, we're a locally-based silent sports advocacy group.
Who's the one in the middle?
That's sure, Buggies are Trail Dog, one of a few. Our mission statement, Crohn's Trail Crew, we not only advocate for silent sports, but we also develop and execute the facilities where those activities take place. So biking, running, hiking, snowshoeing, and cross-country skiing. Some of the group's past accomplishments, Crohn's River Fest Ride. This is a little before my involvement with the group, but the River Fest that used to take place, the group hosted a ride, and the funds raised from that ride were part of the catalyst for some of the future projects we've, one being the trail system that we have constructed at the state park, and then also the purchase of some bike racks that you'll find in the state park as well as in some of the city parks. That ride also allowed the group to make relationships with local businesses that also were like-minded in the support of the ride and our mission statement. Here is a photo, the green squiggly in front of that building, that's one of the bike racks. There's seven of them in various city parks, two of them in the state park, and that was a donation that totaled approximately $4,000. Probably the biggest project that we have undertaken to date would be the single-track trail system in the state park. In July of 2005, Crohn's proposed the park, a trail system specific to off-road bike riding in addition to their main trail system, a system specific for mountain biking. That same year, Crohn's became part of IMBA, the International Mountain Bike Association. And then the following spring, Crohn's had the opportunity to have a IMBA training workshop. So IMBA has a trail care crew, actually multiple ones, and we were lucky enough to get one to come to our area for a weekend to do a trail building workshop. So it was two days, a classroom portion and then a field portion where people actually got out to do hands-on. And they started, that weekend, 100 people started the trail system that's now in Hartman Creek. Here's photos. On the left, you see the IMBA, their mobile team with some of the participants and then some actual trail building. We have just under 10 miles of trail at the park now. We continue to develop and maintain it, 100% volunteer. At this point, we are over 6,000 hours of volunteer time, so multiply that by $15 an hour, we're over $90,000 in donated labor for that project alone. We certainly didn't do this all on our own. We've had help from other portions of the community, including the Boy Scouts, the Boys and Girls Brigade, Studio 212, and then we have two, you'll see them later, two really big Eagle Scout projects. And here's a picture, kind of a before and after of the trail that we put out there. It's all hand-built. And a map of the trail system. You'll see kind of a dotted green, blue, and then black loop. It's a stacked loa with trail system, so it starts with the green, an easier loop, and then the blue, an intermediate loop, and then the black, our advanced or most difficult loop. And that black is where you'll find the Eagle Scout projects. So on the left is what has been sort of nicknamed the Dragon's Tail. It's essentially a boardwalk that has some loaves that you ride your bike over. It's a challenge for even experienced riders.
Turn a little spin there.
On the right, and this one is really unique, what we've got is a double teeter totter. I'm going to use myself for visually for this in the hall to explain it. So if you're riding your bike, you'll approach the teeter totter on one side, ride up that side, one side drops, through a linkage system underneath that teeter totter, the other side drops. So now you're riding from this side to a small platform in between the two teeter totters, riding up the next one, waiting for the next half to drop, and riding off the other side. To our, yeah, it's intimidating, to say the least. To our knowledge, it's the only trail feature of its kind, and we look regularly to see if we can copy it. Our group is not only involved in those projects, we're also, we have people that have assisted with the bike safety clinic, Great Lakes Endurance, Trail Run Sea is a series. We have people that volunteer for that in Willpack and in Iowa, the Candlelight Ski at Hartman Creek State Park, the Iowa Winter Sports Club, the Triathlon Board, the Chamber of Commerce, the Tourism Council, the Achieve Board, and also the Friends of Hartman Creek Board. So what are we up to now? And this is really why we're here today. Our next objective was winter. We're skiers and snowshoes, and we're also bat bikers, so a trail system for those activities.
What's bat biking?
I'll show you a picture.
Okay.
A little suspense. The Willpacka Winter Recreation Trail, recreational trail. The inspiration for this project, again, we're silent sports enthusiasts. The Chamber of Commerce, as well as some local business owners identify that we've got summer covered in this area, but winter, we could use a little more. The Achieve Committee, they shared in the project's objectives, and they provided our first substantial monetary donation and really got us off the ground in terms of fundraising. Multi-use, this trail, we envision multi-uses. On the left, mostly you're probably familiar with classic skiing, takes place in, oftentimes in a set track, the skiers propelling themselves almost in a shuffling or rocking motion. Doesn't take much room to set those tracks. On the right, skate skiing. So here we've got a skier who's essentially having that motion of skating only on a really long skate. So it's a really graceful, efficient way to ski it, requires a little bit wider corridor, a groomed surface, which is often referred to as corduroy. The grooming machine actually makes a pattern in the snow that looks like those ridges of corduroy.
Are those the same skis?
They make a ski that you can use for both, but generally it's specific to one or the other. Okay, fat biking. So on the left, we've got fat bikes or snow bikes, some people refer to them as. I can tell you that I once owned a 1975 Honda motorcycle that had tires that were narrower than these. Four inches plus in diameter, Nobby tire, and you run it at a really low tire pressure. So that allows the rider and the bike to kind of float over surfaces that otherwise a hardened, narrow tire would come through or sink into. Like snowmobiling and skiing, some amount of grooming of a trail system is required even though I would pack down snow with snowshoes or run a snowmobile or use the same equipment that they used to groom for skate skiing, essentially. And then we've got skijoring. We see that as a possibility on our trail as well. And of course, snowshoeing. The walking trail and portions of that recreational trail that go through the high school are wildly popular for hiking. So it only makes sense in the winter to put on snowshoes and hike that trail. And run it to a groomed, a groomed snow trail is also an option for specific snowshoes for All right, partnering agencies. Well, the school, the high schools agreed to let us use that property during the winter. The vets home, they have a space for our equipment to store in one of their buildings. And then the county parks department, you're looking at one of the groomers, they've agreed also to adopt the equipment and maintenance of the equipment. And then last in the list, the Willpacka County Natural Resources Foundation, they allowed us fiscal agency so that we can really get serious about fundraising with a nonprofit status. And here's a map. This is, most importantly, I think, the dotted blue line here, you can see the high school on the right, that the trail will have access for the school to use, and we hope that it becomes part of FIAD program. And we bring lots of little skiers and bikers.
Is that the current cross-country?
Some of it is. Some of it is.
Along with the walking trail?
Yep. And the route, it's going to take us, it's going to take us a season of having the equipment on that facility to know what truly will be the route that we take. And that is just going to be-
How long is the trail approximately, if you went from beginning to end?
I think we're going to shoot for five K.
Five K.
And that's a little groomer. We, it's actually not, most of it's not posed anywhere anymore. We recently purchased the UTV with the tracks and the plow. We're still in the fundraising mode for the remainder of the grooming implements. There's a cost breakdown for the UTV, the tracks, the actual toe-behind groomer, and then signage. So our goal, what's around $40,000. And then lastly, the things that really ultimately make this happen, community, those handshakes, the agreements, the support from- the support from the school, the vets, all of those partnering memberships, relationships. So that's Austin in a nutshell.
Question, there trouble with people snowmobiling on the trails? No?
I don't...
I, I live off of King Road, and there are snowmobilers going down King Road all the time. And I just wondered if there was a trail there and if they might, you know, think, well...
We had incidents of snowmobiling on the walking trail. We did, they addressed that, they still go on it occasionally. I don't foresee us having too big of a problem in this area. If we do, we'll have to go out and address it. We, we also carry law enforcement behind us, so if the park system, we can actually do more when we're out there if we do have that type of problem.
Yeah, I don't recall an incident where we were looking to get anyone or anything like that.
Okay, I just wondered because I know there's so many snowmobilers that kind of go along the edge of King Road there.
I think the school actually encourages snowmobilers to ride the school, don't you? Don't you provide that opportunity? So we'd have to look and see the conflict that might be there, try to resolve that.
We're kind of proud of having a snowmobile parking lot. How many schools can claim that?
About, about how much snow would you need to sort of start your winter? I know it comes and goes, but I mean, what kind of a base do you need to really sort of feel comfortable?
We'll know the answer to that.
There's gonna be a series of smaller snows required. There's gonna be a base, a packing process that occurs before like the official opening occurs. But I think if you got a couple smaller snows and maybe a four-inch snow to do the final. So you're looking at your first three or four snows. It's all about the base. I mean, especially because we're entertaining, grooming the asphalt trail. We certainly don't want people damaging their skis.
I mean, last year, I know people say it was a perfect year for outdoor activity, and it was cold and all that. But it kept it snow all winter long. And so I, you know, could have opened quite early last year and stayed all the way through. I'm just wondering, you know, how, how that plays out. So it, it just, and once you pack that down and kind of keep that base, then you'd be in pretty good shape.
And once you pack it down, it almost like maintains itself. There's like this preservation that occurs because of the compaction and the refrigeration type of process that occurs, from what I understand.
Thank you very much.
Where'd you get cronies for?
Cronies is before me, I don't know where they...
My sister...
This ought to be good.
My sister used to be partners with the cronies restaurant. So essentially, when that restaurant or the cafe initially opened, it was kind of, she sponsored us with not only monetary means, but also food and drink, you know, during meetings and whatnot. So it was kind of like a symbiotic relationship, but then she's never gone. But we still adhere to the title because of the past projects we've done, we just...
And the meaning of cronies.
Yeah. But I'm gonna leave some sponsorship applications here on the table. We're about seven thousand dollars shy of making this all happen. I mean, we've already raised maybe a little over thirty thousand, so maybe perhaps yourself or you know somebody in organization, company. Keep them right there on the table. I'll also keep some copies of the PowerPoint presentation as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is the school and district report card. Say Rhonda here and Mr. Robert Becker are going to talk about that and the ACT testing. So Rhonda, I have the district report card up first.
Okay.
By the way, there was an article in the paper about this a week ago, I think. So that covered a lot and compared us to, or talked about other school districts, neighboring school districts as well. So you may have heard something from this report.
There's not much to say, and a lot of it was covered in that newspaper article. Some slight ups and downs within the categories on the right. Student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and are on track. But overall, we're pretty much the same with the exception of a point deduction we had at the high school, which I will, what Mr. Becker explained when we get to the high school. Most of our buildings did have a goal of closing gaps and looking at student growth through our RTI process. Closing gaps is a category that's going to relate to the three subgroups, which if you scroll down there on the bottom left, then those are the students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and limited English proficiency. And so those scores are how much those students in particular are accelerated. We didn't have much change in that category, but we did have some change in the student growth category, which if you scroll back up, that is how far, not just how highly achieved, but how far they moved from where they started. And so a good way that I track this is with the RTI report or the home report. And this is taken from the students who are in an intervention, mostly with Title I teachers. I'm gonna use the MAP test for this, although there are a lot of different assessments to be used to track this progress. So what we're looking at here, on top is reading, and then on the bottom is math. And so the first category is the kids in the interventions. The first column. Second column is our, our district average growth, and the third column is the national average growth. So what you want to see is those kids in the intervention growing much farther than just the regular district and of course than the national. So the columns and the rows that are highlighted is how many times that happened.
So students in the intervention category are scoring low. So we're, we're giving them intervention, helping them try to accelerate their learning versus the kids who are already scoring well. So some of the interventions we use, that's through our RTI program. So what you're saying is that where the highlighted ones are where the students who are scoring low accelerated faster than the average.
Right. Anytime it's highlighted, you can see that their growth was much higher than the district average in general and the national average. And that happened especially in math this past year, which, which helped our student growth score in math.
Rhonda, are all of these statistics based upon the MAP RIT score?
No. Most of those actually up there, those are all based on WKCE. But what you wanna see is when WKCE and math and all of our other assessments match, then you know that we're having reliability, that we're getting the same.
So what, what will this, well, I, I don't know if, that's the wrong question. What's going to happen when we, we aren't gonna have WKCE?
Yep, that's a good question. They'll use Smarter Balance at the third through eighth, they'll use Spire at nine through eleven. Pals at the...
Will we maybe be comparing apples to apples then, or?
Well, it's a state, statewide assessment, so.
Okay.
And it should, and they are, they are more based on growth, so it should actually be better.
We'll be looking at annual growth. It'd be difficult to go one year to the next year.
It will.
If we're using, the year we use different assessments, of course.
So next year may look quite different based upon...
But we're looking here mostly as annual growth from beginning of the year to end of year. So there, there we would be comparing the same. Just a overall comment on the, how the scorecard or report card works. Every school is given a number. Ours is sixty-nine point seven on the left, and that color then matches the meets expectations down below. But that score is derived from all of those four categories on the right. Student achievement, you can see the maximum score is a hundred for each of those categories. We have a score on student achievement of seventy-one point five. The state score is sixty-six point four. You can follow that through for all four of those categories. They all come together to give us a, a one number, which is sixty-nine point seven. But then you take the student engagement indicators down below and you start just subtracting points because of not having the correct test participation, absenteeism, and dropout rates all score against your, your score. As a school district, there's no deduction for those. I don't think we need to go into the high school deduction because I explained that in the notes, unless anybody has any specific questions about that.
And we have two schools in exceeds expectations and two in meets expectations. And so the district is the average of all of our buildings.
So we can see here that this is the Learning Center Elementary. They are darker green, they are exceeding expectations. The report card for Chain of Lakes Elementary, same seventy-four point eight, exceeds expectations. The middle school, meeting expectations at seventy point six. And then the high school, as you'll note in the paper, I believe that high school score should be five points higher than that. You can see right here where they deducted the points because of the test participation numbers. So I read our high school score as seventy-one point one. It doesn't change the, the color, but puts us in the seventies. You've seen this before, this is, I don't know how many years we've had this report card, three?
Three.
Three, three years. As Mr. Ferr mentioned, the, what goes into scoring with, with the test and measuring growth and all that is going to change. We're supposed to be doing Smarter Balance assessment in two cat, two areas, and then maintaining WKCE, although we haven't heard too much about that. So testing process, testing instruments are going to be changing over the next several years. Notice that nowhere does it ask, well, are band students or art students or...
Yeah, it's the base department.
Or, or the base department, or creativity, or... This is only measuring our paper and pencil. It is paper and pencil at this point, it will be computer-based as we move forward in the Smarter Balance. But yeah, it's, it's one measure. That was the point I tried to make last night as well, that we keep talking about things that can be measured by paper and pencil, but there's a whole wealth of other things that I think we do particularly well on Wapakia that aren't measured and don't get their own report card. So we just need to keep that in mind. Any questions?
In other words, don't get caught up with numbers.
Well, I think not. I mean, take it for what it is. But realize that it's one, one measure and one part of what we do.
Have you looked at any other districts? Is it pretty common that elementary scores higher than middle and high school? I mean, I would just think so.
The common thing you see is middle school being the lowest of, of all that.
That's generally the case, it's always been.
It's just, I think, the way those kids are.
They're great kids, but they're having a lot of things to get to, okay?
Yeah, and you're right, Connie, as we get to high school, some kids are going through and just coloring in the dots. We know they don't, or taking it serious, but not as serious as they should. And that's reflected in some of the older student scores.
They also follow their leaders, right?
No. We set good examples for them. Rob, you wanna talk a little bit about the ACT?
Sure. Not a whole lot to say about ACT either. I, I think the most noteworthy thing is the number of students tested. If you look at last year, we only had ninety-one students that were tested. This year we're back up to our average, really, one twenty-four, high average. The state composite score went up by one tenth of a point, and so did our score. So relative to the state, we stayed, stayed the same. We go through and we look at each different subsection. English dropped, but reading went up, so explain that one. And, and the, the drop for English was point four, and the rise for reading was, I think it was about point five. So, I mean, it's pretty substantial on both sides, and you think that English and reading are linked somehow. But, so we, we haven't gotten a detailed report yet on ACT to really drill down and say, what is it that's causing these kind of blips? But overall, it's kept us pretty much the same. You can look across and see how we compare district to state. And we're ahead in some places and behind a little bit in others, and, and overall, we're behind the state by point two. So we've got a twenty-two point oh, composite, the state had a twenty-two point two. The next graph that we like to look at is the one that's immediately below that, the percent of ACT-tested students ready for college-level coursework. And, and what that's really saying is when they leave Wapakia, are they ready for college? And I think the, the standard that they use is will they score a C in a college-level course in, in that subject area? And when we compare that to the previous year, which you don't see in front of you, we've gone up just like a point in every category. Again, no big moves, no big surprises for us, but just an overall kind of a move up. Biology was up substantially this year compared to previous years. But, you know, a one-year trend doesn't really mean much for us. We wanna watch that, that's a flag for us to continue to watch it for future years. But, you know, over the next three years, five years, if biology continues to rise, we know that we're doing the right thing there. A one-year blip is just interesting for us, it causes us to watch it and not, not make any drastic conclusions from it. There are two other graphs that are listed for you. And to be really honest with you, we don't put a lot of stock in these two graphs. These graphs are student-reported data. And so you've heard me talk about this in past years, I'll just hit on it briefly. The math scores, when you look at the, the math progression, algebra, one and two geometry, trigonometry, and calculus. Well, we don't offer a trig class, that's not one of the classes that we, we talk about. We teach trigonometry skills through our other classes. But when our students self-report, they don't know how to mark this. They don't know which one to put down because it's not the same course progression that we use at the high school. So we recognize that there's a lot of student error. There's a lot of error in this, this, this tracking device. So we just don't spend a lot of time looking at it. And, and then the one below that is science courses by course sequence. And again, if you can scroll down just a little bit, Dr. Peschall. The, it starts with a, a general science class. We don't offer a general science class. Our, our first course at the high school currently is biology. We are looking to develop the general science class though, in order to meet the standards that are forwarded. So in the near future, we may have that. But, but those students that took the ACT test and reported those course progressions, every single one of them that put general biology, then bio, general science and biology, every one of those was wrong. They didn't have that course sequence, we don't want that. So we just don't look at those graphs a lot.
The, the point of having those graphs on here is what? Why, why do they think they're important?
It's supposed to show that those students that take a more rigorous high school course sequence do better on the ACT. And, and I think that's what they're trying to prove. And, you know, everything I've always heard is, you know, if you really wanna do well on the ACT, you need to make sure you're at least into physics by the time that you're a junior in high school, you know? So we do have some kids that'll take physics as seniors also, and that's great to prepare them for college. But if you really wanna max out the ACT, we wanna get those kids in as juniors into the physics level coursework. So, so what it's really saying is the more rigorous the student coursework that they take, the better they're gonna do on ACT. Now, of course, this is all gonna change. This year, this twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, every one of our students as a junior will take the ACT test. And so we don't know what that's gonna do for us. We know that about fifty-four percent of our students take the ACT currently, and we're gonna go from fifty-four percent to a hundred percent. That's a huge jump. It's bigger than most school districts. In the state of Wisconsin, seventy-six percent of students take the ACT test statewide. So Wapakia is under the average compared to the state. And so our, our difference, the number of students taking the ACT is gonna be greater than some of the other schools reporting. We hope that we'll do well. We know, we're suspecting that the state average is gonna trend down, because most college-bound students have to take the ACT test. We know that it's the non-college students have to take the ACT test. We know that it's the non-college-bound students that haven't taken it in the past. So it's going to be very interesting. Mr. Ferrer asked, is it apples to apples? It won't be. We can't really compare past ACT scores to what's reported out in the future. But we will be able to compare to the state averages and to the districts around us. So it's a time of unknowns for us.
Does, why are all of our students taking it? Is that mandated?
Yes.
Across in the whole state of Wisconsin, every junior will take the test?
Right. And that is designed to replace the WKCE test. But as luck would have it, it doesn't. We're still doing the WKCE test. We do it, the testing window is the end of October, beginning of November. Students will take the science and math portions on the WKCE.
Science and social studies.
Science and social studies, there we go, on the WKCE. But then they will take the full ACT as juniors. So sophomores taking the WKCE, juniors taking the full ACT.
But is the WKCE, isn't that playing out though? I mean, that's this year, but isn't that going to go away in the future?
Well, there's no replacement at this point for social studies yet. ACT is not on, there's no social studies on ACT. So
If there were an ACT social studies, you probably would have joined in with the others, is what you're suggesting?
Well, yeah, and that's a state decision, you know. But our state said, we're going to use the ACT because it's what's used for college entrance and it measures what students know. We think it's a good measure, but it doesn't measure everything that we want students to learn in the state of Wisconsin. So
Is it going to be free then for all students to take?
It is free for all students to take. Yep. And they can use the results of their ACT as their college entrance ACT. Or they can retake the test, or they can take it prior to ACT also, just to get the practice. So we still do have the six tests a year that our high school hosts. We've got to give people that puts that on. And we continue to believe that that's going to be necessary, even though students are, all students are going to take the ACT in the spring.
So when we say the students don't have, they pay now, don't they?
Students have, don't have to pay for the ACT. That's the state mandated test that comes, well, they do have to pay on those other weekends.
And it's on there. It's up to them to take. It's optional.
Right.
But when they take it the first time, this is an entire school district, they don't pay? Do we pay?
When we take it as a school district, they don't pay, right?
Okay.
And but that doesn't necessarily, that won't necessarily be their first time taking. I mean, there are some students that could take it. The rules for ACT say that you can begin taking it when you're a freshman in high school. And you can take it as many times as you want during that period of time. You just have to pay thirty-five dollars a week, whatever those tests are.
Sometimes schools, kids take it too.
Yeah, middle school kids need to be recommended. They need to access it through another program. So they have to be part of the gifted and talented consortium or something to that effect.
Well, I remember when my kids took it, your fee included the scores being sent to two colleges.
If you choose to do it.
So is that still part of the thing? I mean, even though they're not paying?
Good question. We don't know a whole lot about how ACT has been worked for us. We are glad to know that it's going to be a paper and pencil test. We're struggling right now with the ASPIRE test. Freshmen take that and it is computer based. And we had ASPIRE testing today. We'll do it again on Thursday. But adding the technology piece has really complicated things for us. So the ACT test will be the classic paper and pencil based booklet form test. And I would assume that they would be able to report to two colleges just like they have on others. But I don't know that for a fact.
When will they take it, junior?
It's all on one day. I believe it's March second or third. The whole state has to take it on that day. That's one of the reasons it's paper and pencil, because if every junior in the state was on the computer at that time.
Most students don't even know where they're going, by Mark, the college bound.
Well, actually, most of our, most of our juniors that are college bound will take either the April or the June ACT test. So this falls very much into the same timeline that most of our juniors are currently taking the ACT.
And I'm sure you probably have some statistics, but just from my experience, because most of the students that I worked with either took the ACT or many of them did anyway, I would say at least fifty percent, maybe even higher, take it more than once. Because in the fall of the year, like right now, a lot of seniors are taking it because they took it last spring and they want to up their scores. So, because I would ask every time we had our prep classes, how many of you taken it for? Half of them have already done it, at least.
Right. And statistically, I think the number is three points. By retaking it, most students average a three-point gain.
Really?
Right.
So this, these scores that we're seeing here, how is that reflected with kids who take it multiple times? Do you know?
I don't know how they compile that. This is, I think they look at their top score if they take it multiple times and they report that score through this.
Do they get to choose which one they're going to send to the colleges? Or I can talk from personal experience. I have a high school senior right now who's taken the ACT test three or four times. And we don't report the scores. When ACT says, which colleges do you want to report to? We don't put a college down. And then he can look at which test he did the best on and he can send those scores forward to the colleges that he wants to. And I still believe he gets two free ones and then he may have to pay for additional ones. But you can do that right through the College Board's website.
It used to be ACT would tell the students in their reports years ago, I don't know if it's still the same, that they would, you could take the test as many times as you like. They would just take the highest score. They would send it out, but the university you send it to would use the highest score that they have on record. And that was sort of how they always got around saying, well, that way you can, you know, take this three times. And if you, the highest score was the first time, well, that's the one that'll come into play. But I think what you're suggesting is that maybe some of the colleges look at and say, oh, gosh, this one did lousy and lousy and one good one, you know? And so they may see a bias there. So now they don't necessarily encourage that.
Right.
And some schools, if you send it three times, will take your high math, your high science, your high English.
Some actually allow you to do that and report out the high schools.
What if they're sick on March third?
There is makeup, there's a two-week makeup period in which students can make those tests up. And you know, with as many students as we're going to be testing, we know that we'll be doing some makeup. There's another test that's coupled with this. The very next day, we take a test called the work keys test. It's a test that's more of a vocational aptitude test. But again, all of the students will be taking it and it'll be paper and pencil and just one more test for us to take.
What do you do for students that don't show up?
For that two-week period?
No, that don't show up on March third or whatever to take the test.
They'll have to do it in the makeup session.
And what if they don't show up in the makeup session?
We'll watch them every single day and try and get them there, you know, and
They don't get penalized. We do.
That's what I'm saying. We get penalized.
Well, and that's, you know, that's what happened with us on our school report card. I mean, so we do our best. But ultimately, there comes a point where, you know, we can only do our best. We'll make phone calls. We'll go out to the house. We'll knock indoors. We'll often bring the test to them and have it proctored at their house. Whatever it takes, we will make it happen. And you know, we've, we received a five-point deduction on our report card. We don't intend to let that happen again. So we're working real hard to not have that happen.
Well, you couldn't have helped that, could you?
Can't control that situation. That was a conscious decision to save.
Well, you err on the side of sensitivity, which you would hope you'd still do.
Rob, is there any writing component to the one ACT next March?
It is the ACT plus writing, I believe.
So who's going to look at all the writing? You have to send that into who?
Yep. Not us. ACT was awarded a huge contract with this, you know, and they allot it very diligently across the nation to be the test of choice. And it is a test of choice for many, many states. Great stock to own right now.
Good to know.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rob.
Should we expunge the record for what you just said?
Maybe.
Inside trigger tips?
I might suggest that we do the consent agenda now and then break and go into discussion. Would that be okay? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays?
It used to be, but you never
It is.
Oh.
My fault. Sorry. Which Steve? Betty Mannion, we'll call it it. Pat Barrett?
Ah, yeah.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Justin Greenfield?
Yes.
Scotty Baldwin?
Yes.
Steve Shandell?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Why does that happen to be?
Are you kidding?
No, just because of what's the things that are on fire.
Because long ago, Chris Anderson and I spoke out. And ever since then, everyone changed.
So all we have left then is, not all, but what we have left is the budget discussion. So perhaps we'll take five minutes and then have that discussion. These, we're part of the consent agenda, but they are the letters that the students wrote asking for early graduation. I thought you might want to just peruse those if you do their party.
Is that our highest number ever?
I don't think we had five last year.
Yeah, it seemed like we had.
Pretty close.
Well, good to see the CNAs because we need them. That's for sure.
This is a pretty detailed look at the budgets as we prepare for the budget hearing on the twenty-eighth. We would like any direction that you have or change in direction that you might suggest as a board so that we can prepare the budget you want on the twenty-eighth. This budget has been printed in the newspaper as required, as in the paper last week. But having said that, we are able to change it between the printing in the newspaper and the budget hearing. So we made some adjustments since we talked to you last time. And I'm sure Carl will go over those, what those adjustments are. New information and other items.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Once again, giving me that, we need to talk a little bit about the budget. A while back, I had the opportunity a couple of years ago to travel through the New Mexico mountains and into the northern Arizona, the plains. And it was at night. Of course, I always travel at night, late at night, coming through the mountains, coming through the desert plains and through the Navajo Nation. And with my friend, we're in a rental car. And we decided, why don't we stop so late as it is? We're not to the Grand Canyon. We're miles and miles away. So we decided to stop and sit on top of that car, just a rental car. And what I do most often best, you probably can ask my office staff to stare out the window looking to the sky. So one of the things we did is I sat on top of that car. We literally had scheduled actually trips around seeing meteor showers, per se ads, things such as that. But this night was different. This night in the sky, it was the most spectacular meteor that we've ever seen. And I thought about when I prepared this presentation, our comets, all our comets, little, small, big. And what do they do? They dream. And what do we do? And I thought about, what do we do as educators and board members and people? We're somewhat like dream catchers ourselves. We try to manifest their good dreams and try to keep out the dreams that can harm them. Black Elk said that moment has been learned from very little children. The hearts of the little children are pure. Basically, I think this is true because many things only people miss. When I was on that Navajo Nation, we heard about it tonight, listen, respect, participate, be safe. And so Angela Laka said, the Navajo Nation's University of Education Professor. So in the past, I've had the opportunity to be your business manager for four years. And one of the few first years, I started out with a mathematical formula for the power of connectedness. The mathematical formula, of course, substantiates this. Last year, I talked about the mathematical forms of balance. Now, we know mathematically that everything we do math, everything is linked, everything is connected, and everything causes change. So this year, I thought, why not introduce a new formula? And this formula really says, and hopefully I can read it correctly, in general relativity, the equations of like magnitude in a vacuum become G is a determinant of the metric tensor. Wow, that's pretty complicated. Well, I want to simplify that this evening. What that really means is guiding our comets to dream. The two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget is really based upon this Native American proverb, we only take what we need, which is balance. We talk a lot about the purpose of the annual budget, which is to achieve educational objectives that would impact this for the future. We know that the annual budget is a financial plan. It's based upon budget priorities that we set throughout the school year. Annual budget adjustments are made soon, October fifteenth, tomorrow. We should know our certification of general city. And then the property tax levy to support this budget will be submitted October twenty eighth. What are some priorities? We want to focus on balancing all the needs of all stakeholders, students, staff, community members, to continue to deliver the best education possible. Also, to continue to assess health insurance costs in conjunction with health insurance committee to reduce the cost. As you knew, in spring, we had the working on wellness committee. Connie talked about the partnership with the YMCA this evening. We knew that over a four-year period, this district has reduced its health insurance cost by twenty percent, which is, which is astronaut, which is a sounding accomplishment due to a multitude, to the health insurance committee, wellness team, board of education meeting together. We also want to implement policies and procedures that ensure fiscal responsibility. I think we do that with our designated fund balance. We don't have to short-term borrow. We don't have to take principal interest out of construction costs to pay for the short-term burnout kind of capacity. We continue to align our food service requirements by offering nutritious, quality meals to ensure those qualified for those meals are provided with them. And I want to talk a little bit about this. We have a farm-to-school program. We also, you've probably heard a lot about some districts getting for four-year grants for their entire school district to receive meals for everyone. Our district has about a thirty-nine percent poverty rate overall right now. We don't quite qualify for that. But I want to talk a little bit about some school districts that do things such as saying, well, let's just give away the federal state aid. Let's just give away the federal state aid and we're going to do it on our own. What does that mean? Is that fiscally responsible? For our district, we have a million-dollar food service budget. We receive annually four hundred thousand dollars in federal funding for that. Now, let's put that in perspective. Our overall fund TAM budget, fund TAM is about twenty-two million dollars. We receive less than three percent of federal funds to support that budget. So we would love to go down to the nutrition center and have brown rice pasta, three things. But if we took away four hundred thousand dollars out of that budget, what would happen? That, our prices would have to increase dramatically. And we also know that we are Green Bay School District, has gum to ours, a school district, and said that we're offering comparable meals that they're offering their school. So I just wanted to talk, put the food service aspect in a little bit of perspective. We continually provide environmental safety compliance in conjunction with the district's school safety council, keeping the district up to date with the latest safety requirements. So we continue the exploration of energy conservation methodologies. Soon, we will have the theater at the high school, lighting retrofit for energy conservation, what was it, energy cap, five hundred dollars. We provide financial subsidy for continuing to prioritize what the priorities that are that belong to the best interests of the taxpayers. I think I'll talk a little bit about that. Hopefully, I can substantiate that. And we continue to maintain the building and grounds throughout this district, our infrastructure, such as WPAK's centers you've talked about this evening, traffic design, and utility unit on top of the roof, which is energy efficiency we put in the summer. We've also replaced all the seal coating on the high school parking. We know if we had to tear up the whole parking structure, this has to be universal. How we seal that came every so, every so often, so you don't have to go to screen that. Middle school has a new theater curtain. We know and I'm sure, instead, high school theater is one of the major issues for safety. And to maintain that safety, the theater, corrisps, curtains, lighting structures have to be in compliance and safe. So that's a new avenue for our infrastructure. And I think Rhonda wanted the Chain of Lakes painted with multitude of different colors in her room. So we did that this year, too. We also address the annual transportation replacement. We know that every year in December, we put hundreds of thousands of miles on our buses. And every two years, we have a cycle, a plan to replace those buses. So the board gives approval and we purchase the new buses. You know that some of our old buses end up in perhaps third world countries used for other guns. So that's part of our safety. So we continue to provide the necessary training to support and support So we continue to provide the necessary training to support and support service, including educator effectiveness, smarter balance assessments, and bloodborne pathogen, and hazardous material screening to all staff. And then we continue to evaluate the aroma trends and long-range budget plans for the district. We know that roadblocks could be altered in such a way as to lose categorical funding, reduce revenue limits. We know each year, categorical aid and federal funding goes down title one. So that is part of that. It happens to change often, and changes in laws and regulations may render this budget assumptions unclear and accurate. We know this year that disacquaintment is estimated to decline using the third Friday count revenue limit calculation by twenty-two students. We talked about the student count going up, thirty-four students from last year. But when you use the third Friday count methodology that fits into your revenue cap, what that does, it takes your under twenty-eight kindergarten students, multiplies those times point five, it takes your early childhood students of sixteen, multiply times point five. And then what it does is takes your upper school enrollment, forty-three, times point four, you roll those all up, and then you get your actual number for the revenue limit calculation, which is twenty-two students less than last year. It is assumed the district will accept one hundred and five students under the open enrollments to tuition waiver law, and that a hundred and seven students will be the district under this law. We know that trend has online training, online schools, and vouchers, as over the last few years has shifted. More students exiting. It's really closed, it's neutralized, it's like it had an equilibrium point, but that's where that is right now. We've offered now the core-yo kindergarten, and that's a new avenue, and we know that health insurance will decrease by approximately three percent this year. Reduce positions, one point oh two teachers, and one support staff. Replacing the transit society, moving in and out, we know that eleven teachers left the district, eleven and a half support staff left the district and had to be replaced. Added positions, two and a half teachers, and then one nurse. Where does the money come from? Ninety-five percent of the money comes from the general state aid and property taxes. There's the breakout. So if you see this right here, fifty-four percent comes from general aid, and forty-one percent comes from state sources. That whole equation, and only three point three percent comes from federal sources. That whole equation has shifted over the years from basically the opposite. So what does that mean? That means more higher taxes. So where is the money spent? Two different perspectives. The expenditure by function, which is the purpose for the expenditure, which the expenditure is made, and the expenditure by object, which is the type of goods and services purchased. Division of expenditures by function shows sixty percent of this budget is for instruction. Thirty-seven percent of this budget is for libraries, psychologists, counselors, nurses, therapists, transportation, curricular, everything that has a direct link to education. And then the three percent is that open enrollment I just talked about, general tuition payments. And that's the breakout of that, sixty, thirty-seven, and three. The division expenditures then by object, the other methodology, shows that wages and benefits account for seventy-seven percent of this budget, non-salary twenty-three percent. This has shifted over the years. We put money in our infrastructure. Most districts are hovering around any wages and benefits at eighty-two percent. So of course, we don't, what we do is we're a service industry, so that, of course, would be the majority of our budget. That's the breakup for the object. So the Wapaka School District's property tax and mill rate pattern to support this budget is estimated at fifteen million, seven hundred, thousand, one hundred twelve dollars. So if you look at a mill rate analysis over the past few years, you can see that that mill rate has gone up from eight dollars and eighty-six cents per one thousand dollars of property valuation, nine dollars and twenty, ten dollars and forty cents, ten dollars and sixty-five cents. This year, we're projecting that eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents. But you know, when I just showed you that slide, ninety-five percent of that money, that fifty-four percent used to be the opposite direction, so fifty-four, forty-one percent, general state aid, state taxes. So what does that mean to a home value of that a hundred thousand dollars? That mean from last year, that's about a sixty-two dollar impact. And see, this is in your packet, but it shows you that for a home value that at two hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred fifty-five dollars. Home value at two hundred thousand, a hundred twenty-four dollars. A home value at a hundred fifty thousand, ninety-three dollars. That's the mill rate chart over the few years. So if we look at some surrounding school districts, mill rate comparison, seven actually surrounding school districts, you can see that Clintonville, Iowas, Scandinavia, Manawha, New London, and then Wapaka, Waialuga, and Wild Rose, their mill rates from the last annual report. Clintonville was a little bit higher. New London was close to us, about ten dollars and thirty-five cents, where we were ten sixty-five. And then you'll see that Waialuga and Wild Rose were substantially lower, eight dollars and, eight dollars and some cents. So the one thing about all these seven school districts, why are they lower? Well, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that, but remember, all these sevens surrounding school districts are taxing to the max. This is a district with packings. So if you look at the actual tax dollars collected over the years with that general state aid going down, it's, it's, it's going up each year to make up for that difference. We know our property valuation, we talked about that. At one point, this district was one point five billion dollars. Now it's about one point four billion dollars. Now, if you take one point five billion dollars divided by a twenty-two million dollar budget, I mean, one point five billion is a lot more than twenty-two million. And that's when that shift, when that property valuation goes down, mill rates go up. That's how the scenario works. When the property valuation goes up, then mill rates go down. The general aid loss trend over the years, and this is substantial, you can see that the district in oh eight, oh nine, lost eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The year thereafter, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, then a million dollars, then seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, we didn't lose any money, but we did lose money the prior years compounded. And then this year, another half million dollar loss in general state aid. So what's the relationship? What's the general aid loss relationship and the tax increase relationship? If you can see this chart, it's in your packet, you can see that when we lost eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, we only increased taxes to make up for that difference for two hundred thousand. When we lost seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, we only increased the taxes four hundred thousand to make up for that difference. We're not making up for the difference. When we lost a million dollars, a million dollars, we actually went down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes. Well, there came a point last two thousand twelve, I thought it was thirteen, we lost another hundred and seven, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we actually increased taxes by one point three. But if you take the six-year analysis going forward, what happened in six years? We lost three point nine million dollars in general state aid over a six-year period, and what did we do with taxes? Taxes, three million dollars. That's nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollar net loss, net shortfall from the general aid loss. What else have we done? Now, we only take what we need. Now, there's four hundred and twenty-four school districts in the state of Wisconsin. Sixty, only about sixty taxed below the revenue cap. Only fourteen taxed at least a million dollars below the revenue cap. The school district of Wapaka, remember, they were taxing to the max back year. And we were, our mill rate was lower, but our property valuation was about one point five billion at that point. You can see that, oh, what did we do? We're losing general state aid, we're not keeping up with the tax rate, we're also taxing underneath the cap. Allowable revenue cap by nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, by a million five, by two point seven million, by two point eight million, by two point seven million last year. This proposed budget is another two million dollars underneath the revenue cap. When I talk about the top and only school districts that are taxing underneath the allowable revenue cap by at least a million dollars, Wapaka ranks number four last year. So what does that mean? We're a company with school districts like Hudson. They have a sixty-two million dollar budget. Madison Metropolitan, they have a three hundred and ten thousand dollar budget. We have a twenty million dollar budget, thank you. So when Madison taxed a million, some million dollars underneath the cap, with a three hundred and ten million dollar budget, it's about three, three percent. If you look at Wapaka here, what they're taxing underneath the allowable cap, what we're taxing underneath the allowable cap was about eleven point seven percent. But what are we taxing underneath the allowable tax levy? About nineteen percent. So we're literally taxing nineteen percent below the allowable tax levy that we could, we're doing that on the table. So we're only taking what we need. What did we do a few years back? Well, we brought in our debt portion of the tax we taxed. It's a little bit scary. We had to sign a bunch of documents worth about eight point five million dollars. But what did that do over six years? Over six years, that saves the district another five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in taxes. How do we mitigate? This was the original mitigation plan. We mitigated the mitigation plan, basically, with the debt service, debt service, uh, safe. So now, we know the property tax levy and tax rates are estimates, and a number of factors will change, and we're pretty close. We'll actually get general state aid probably tomorrow, and we know our property valuation. Our student enrollment may tweak a little bit. So we know that we're close, but there's a disclaimer. We don't quite know that until October twenty eighth. But what else have we done? Now, the comparisons of current educational cost per student of surrounding school districts, this is really the most reliable method of comparison. So we have the current educational cost, which is the overall instruction, instructional support cost per student. And then we have the total educational cost, which includes facility cost and transportation cost. Now, if you think about the total educational cost, and I want you to for a moment, this district put over one point five million dollars in safety initiatives, video surveillance, key card access, traffic design, safety, communications, radio communications with the county. Now, the district didn't go into the taxpayer to say, let's raise the, we need to exceed our revenue limit for these safety initiatives. They did it within their budget. We did it within our budget. So that's an added cost that do the surrounding school districts have? Did they add to that? I think you know the answer, how much money the surrounding school districts put into that. Now, if you look at the current educational cost comparison to the state average, it's ten thousand, seven seventy-four for the current educational cost per pupil. Surrounding school districts, ten thousand, thirty-eight. Wapaka, nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six. So, and they're taxing to the max, every one of those school districts. If you take the total educational cost, which includes that facility cost, you can see that the state average is twelve eight oh nine. Surrounding school districts, twelve one one seven. Wapaka, twelve one one eight. Basically, relatively the same. Now, if we look at the thirty-four school districts in CISA five, you can see that, again, the state average is the same, ten thousand, seven seventy-four per pupil. CISA five averaged ten thousand, two hundred and seventy, and then Wapaka, nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six. If you look at the total educational cost then, state average is twelve eight oh nine again. CISA five is twelve one five three, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-three per student. Wapaka is twelve thousand, one hundred and eighteen. So basically, the lower then was thirty-four school districts in total educational cost and current educational cost. Those are the districts. So we talked a little bit about enrollment this evening, and Melody Gating once said, "Not knowing has taught you no more than you could ever imagine." And if we look at our third Friday count methodology, which I talked about earlier, of how twenty-two students dropping from here. Now, it's not knowing has taught us to know more than we ever would know. Well, it's true. So we try to forecast every year. Last year, we thought, overall, if we didn't have 4K, we'd be down at least fifty students. That's all the moving attrition. But now, this chart really shows it has some constants moving grade levels forward, but then it has some constants of 4K and kindergarten and early childhood. So hopefully, for the next two years, we won't be in more plateau. But of course, we need to have a disclaimer, not knowing, we don't know in the transit society exactly what will come. So this is the revenue limit calculation. This is where everything is based. This document really shows, and I'll just go briefly through it. It shows last year's major revenues and major expenditures. Then it takes two, three-year rolling averages. This section is where the property valuation is implemented, that one point four billion, and of course, that one point four is one point five, this mill rate goes down. And if it goes opposite direction, that property valuation goes down, then that mill rate goes up. Over here, it should calculate through a mathematical formula how much revenue you can have, how much you can have in the system. How you, how much of that ninety-five percent divided between general state aid, state taxes, gives you a number. And then they give you that, here's your general state aid. And then they, then you come down to what's your allowable tax levy, then you can include your debt service outside the revenue. That gives us fifteen million for both, fifteen million, seven hundred thousand, one hundred and twelve dollar budget. That shows over here that we are taxing two point oh two two nine nine oh underneath the allowable revenue cap. This document shows the overall revenues. Overall revenues for this, for most budget is twenty-three million, two one three. And this shows us the breakout of those, our expenditures. Here's the seventy-seven percent I talked about earlier, and here's the twenty-three percent. And I want you to note that this year, the elementary to the school and elementary budgets went down mainly due to, we took a page of perhaps what I did in another district, or what the private sector is doing. We took a blueprint of our entire, all our buildings, and we said, where is every coffee machine? Where is every printer in our building? We want to know. And then we're going to scale that back, because we know what date card it is caused, and things such as that. And we also know that each individual school had their own lease agreement. So we decided to consolidate that out of the district central fund, and basically, they wouldn't have that expenditure anymore, and we'd save money annually on that. And that is about a forty thousand dollar annual savings for this. And this shows that the twenty-two million dollar basically expenditure. This is a sum machine which shows all our funds, Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-One, which is a donation fund. We have a lot of activities that don't quite meet the criteria of student activity. So there's fundraising going on, so that's basically Fund Twenty-One. We have special education, which is basically a three million dollar operation. It's a three million dollar budget. We get reimbursed about one-third of that, so possibly, it has to be, it has to net zero at the end of every fiscal year. So there's an operating transfer that needs to come out of Fund Ten to support special education, which is about one point nine million dollars, about three million. And basically, that's our difference. And then there's debt service, which I talked about, the capital projects where we had building demolished, where we made the sale of property in, where we did some proponents for safety measures. And then we have a food service budget, which is about a million dollars. Overall, that's about a thirty-one million dollar budget, including off-funds. This is the budget publication for the paper. There's a difference, this is a more detailed segment. But this just shows you this, and I want to talk a little bit about, at the end of this fiscal year, we have designated fund balance, we have OPEF fund balance, we have debt service fund balance, and at the end of the fiscal year, those total of all those fund balances in eight point four million dollars. Now, so basically, revenues versus expenditures for last fiscal year came in five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars better. Revenues were better than expenditures. That was due to two factors. We talked a little bit about that. One was to, to the one hundred and seventy thousand dollar two bus purchases that the board approved in December last fiscal year. The auditors did not like that they were received, I think, July second, something like that. So they moved that expenditure, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, into this budget. The other thing was of the one hundred and seventy-three thousand, so we set aside two hundred thousand dollars for the Affordable Care Act to be prepared if something were to swing, that we needed to move fast on the Affordable Care Act. So that gets you to about a hundred and forty thousand dollar differential, which of the twenty-two million dollar budget is less than one percent compared to the budget. So that's where we came to this year. But you know, now, this year, we're saying, well, since we had more revenues than expenditures last year, this year, we're going to budget in opposite direction. We're going to budget expenditures greater than revenues. So we're saying the Fund Ten will be budgeted two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars lower than the revenues we anticipate receiving. Well, why not the whole hundred, five hundred and seventeen? Well, we still have the Affordable Care Act hanging out there. We think, we'll have a meeting on October twenty-second, we think that we, our health insurance cycle compliance will make us not January first, but will make us compliant, having to be compliant July first, two thousand and fifteen, because of the way our health insurance is renewed already. But we, that's why we're having to safety, to be sure that we don't have to come into some dilemma that we have to do that. And one thing I want to talk about, fund balance. Fund balance is, once again, it's not an eight point one million dollar just sitting in our bank right now. Fund balance is, once again, it's not an eight point one million dollar just sitting in our bank right now. What we get taxes to, so we have ninety-five percent of money comes from those two sources, taxes and general state aid. We get taxes about two times a year. And we get general state aid in four increments basically through half the year. So we have belferries. We have curves, highs and lows. So it's a plateau that out. That's what your fund balance is for, to keep you from short-term borrowing. You know that gave us a healthier bond rating in our, when we tried to go to the market following.
What's the lowest you get in the fund balance?
Seven hundred dollars. And as the budgets increase, it overrides it. So if you can see that, uh, instruction overall costs, the details about twelve, twelve point four, basically local sources that were, after we get the money for, well, no, this is the money we get from local sources, about twelve nine. And then nine point fours will give them the state sources of general aid. And to move down, there's twenty-three million, two one three eight four four, which is two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars less than the revenues anticipated. This is the expenditure portion for our token out. And you can see twelve million for basically instruction, eight million for support services. That is, uh, that is a combination of twenty-three million, forty-two, two, three, nine for the total expenses. Here is the fund twenty-one, fund twenty-seven. I talked about special education already, and that, that's about the three million dollar budget. We talked about debt service. Debt service, we have a fund balance that carries over every fiscal year because our payments are due in October. So we need a fund balance every year to carry over. But you know that that fund balance is getting shorter and shorter as the two thousand nineteen approaches. And then fund forty-one and fund forty-nine, capital projects expenditures, where we took surveillance and did some capital improvements and it's broken out. And we have also student activity monies to them in the tune of one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars to properly appropriate that track in the last few years. Uh, food service, there's a million dollars of food service costs. Get through, this is the publication in the paper. Same thing, just shorter version, go through it fast. The only thing I want to note is that you can see that our total expenditures from last year, so the year prior, they went up two point six percent. Well, how much are they going up this year? Two point six percent. The only thing that's shifting because of the general state aid, and we offer, we also offer a new 4K program. We have a part new line of infrastructure, uh, implemented this year. But we're only going up two point six percent from the prior year. Basically, that's blacklining. You can see that because of the general state aid laws, there's still two million dollars underneath the revenue cap. That's where it increases. So I talked about proposed fund balance a little bit. This is a little bit of the breakout, year end, five hundred seventeen. Budgeted two sixty-eight this year, about eight point four million. This year proposed eight point one at the end of fiscal year. So, this is going past my thoughts, not if it's sleeping, are we? So I, destroying what the politics have used for years as a guiding principle. So the impact, well, with the word, I think we are. Trying not to take anything personally. We don't make any assumptions about any children who come through our door or any staff. There's vows to our best, we're skeptical, like the not of an Asian said, but learn to listen. The school district of OPEC is about citizenship. You can see it up here. You can look at the photography in the back walls, we're about academic achievement responsibility. That's guiding our comments to basically their dreams. So bring me all of your dreams, dreamers. Bring me all of your heart melodies that I may rap and that move cloud plot away from the two rough fingers in the world. Concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask those.
Can you give a projection of what's going to happen in, uh, two thousand nineteen? To our budget? Um, when we pay our last, uh, last, our last debt?
Well, we know that we'll have no debt service tax levy, which will be roughly two million dollars as the fluctuation goes down, whereas it's about three point three. We know at that point, I think we'll be above two point some million dollars. If we know that, we won't have the debt service ask for a tax portion unless the district decides to build something or.
I mean, what does that do to the, the tax rate, uh, for, you know, the, the property owners?
It would reduce it.
Percentage?
Half? Not half, no, no, it won't be half.
That was wishful.
Yeah, what's our total levy right now?
Total levy is, well, fifteen million.
And so three million of that would be a fifty.
Yeah.
Twenty percent. Do you have what would happen today?
If there weren't any other unforeseen things that the district would need to buy or choose to build.
Choose to build?
But even if we chose to build or we had some unforeseen things, it would have to be a significant amount to match what we presently have, to not have the, otherwise the impact would be much less.
I think we're taking care of all of those contingencies every year.
Trying very hard with our budget, everything.
Except we don't know what the state is going to do.
Doesn't make any difference then.
Well, they could eliminate twenty percent of their.
She did.
Yes, yes, they could.
And then we'd be even out.
Well, if that happens, there'll be a whole bunch of schools, schools going bankrupt, you know?
Well, if the formula is holds true for our district, yeah, it could help. You know, again, it's helping some districts and it's really analyzing other districts, so.
In the budget here of ninety-seven, it looks like, uh, for capital projects, what's involved in there?
Ninety-seven thousand for expenditures? That'd be a combination of fund forty-one and fund forty-nine. Part of that is the playground equipment, um, that we, the board was donated, but there would be increments paid back, and I think five or ten thousand increments annually from, um, the PTG. And the other component of that is the, uh, we build, we're building a new house. So we basically, once again, we put the, any revenue surplus in there, but to front that house, to start it, that's a startup, uh, those are a combination of those two costs.
Any other identified maintenance items would not be there, would be held back into the district non-salary?
Correct, yeah. Absolutely, yes.
Talk about the big ticket item there, the boiler come from there, the rooftop.
Oh, chiller? Chiller unit, uh, there was two, one of the chiller units went on the roof of the, uh, gosh, I wish I had videotape because I couldn't stop watching it. But the Corinne, one of the new energy efficient from August winter, similar to the one that was approved, I believe for the middle, was it the middle school a few years back? We put on a chiller and this was another chiller, chiller unit that, uh, at the end of the fiscal, end of the calendar year, the unit was leaking freon and, uh, there was no hazardous problem, but we ended up putting a new chiller. And we know it's kind of like headlights. There's another chiller on there that, uh, we're analyzing and keeping our eye on. And that might be another expenditure in next fiscal year budget too.
How much is that?
That was close to, there was three bits. I think it was forty thousand or forty, sixty thousand.
But we, we looked at that the last time and it was cheaper to do that than to put a new one on.
I think we put it, we did put a new one on.
We did.
Yeah, we put a new one on and then we put another new one on.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And there's three other chillers, there's two other chillers on the WLC.
Fund ten, the, uh, looking back at actual expenses, twelve thirteen, thirteen fourteen, uh, for district-wide non-salary, uh, produce a substantial bump here for fourteen, fifteen.
Part of it is, part of it is the hundred seventy thousand dollars, at least for the bus. Buses going into this year's budget. And then there was insurance, uh, insurance, uh, payment made early in the last fiscal year for, in, in the budget. Whereas, so we didn't have the budget for it, it was from the year before. But this year, the insurance is more of a, a greater component. You probably noticed the percentage has increased in insurance line too, and.
What type of insurance are you talking about?
We're talking about property liability, um, the whole gamut of general liability. Because we had a transition, uh, transition in accounts in my office. And, uh, there was a double payment made in the end of the fiscal year, so, um, for, for the prior year. So last year's budget looked, didn't look how it normally would look as far as expenditure. And then there's part of a parking, uh, structure. We paid for it in two different, the park traffic design, we paid in two different, through two different budget cycles, I should say. And part of it is that chiller unit too, going into that budget, so. There's, I can give you more detail, I'm sure there's more, Steve.
I appreciate that.
Charlie talked about the two hundred thousand dollars that we're putting away for, um, the, um, Affordable Care Act. Our, our meeting is prior to the budget hearing.
Correct.
So we'll know at that time whether we need that two hundred thousand dollars budgeted this year or whether we can delay that until next year.
A meeting with Kevin?
Yes. I, I tend to believe that we will not need that money this year. Even if we do, it's not going to be the entire two hundred thousand because it won't be implemented until January, even if it, if it's required by them. But are we levying for that two hundred? In this scenario, we are.
Well, we could, we're under, we could under levy two hundred thousand dollars. You saw where if we were matching the five hundred seventeen thousand dollar difference from the prior year, if we're not quite, it's two hundred sixteen versus five hundred seventeen. We did that, then, you know, that would.
So in effect, we are budgeting the two hundred thousand for Affordable Care Act?
Yeah, we're not, we're not specifically putting it into an account. We're just not taking the fund balance down as substantial as it increased this year.
So the taxpayer is, uh, funding that?
Correct.
In this budget?
Yeah.
For all two hundred? But that may change in the final, what you're suggesting.
By the time we get to the final, right?
And, and it.
But is that, is there time to change the?
Yeah, it's not final until you approve it on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, absolutely. This is really Paul's budget and you guys can, you know, kind of review it in your mind. And we do believe that, that potential that Affordable Care Act will be July first, that it will be, because of our health insurance cycle, pretty long.
So you're expecting that we won't need it in this budget?
Yes.
I, I said that, I don't have the words in his mouth, but.
Well, I want to, I want to hear it from him.
I, I'm optimistically confident, so.
He'll keep, he'll keep his breast up now, why not?
We, we both agree.
It is our intent that if that money's not needed this year, budget will take it out, yeah.
When is that, when is that policy written?
Um, it's, uh, July first to July first.
Dave, did you want to elaborate a little bit on the staffing you said you would talk about coming up? I know the, the one was the nurse and then the, you know, in terms of additional?
Oh, um, no, not until the budget hearing. I don't have that information until the budget, the actual budget hearing, I don't.
Okay, okay. So just in general, there was one slot where it said nurse and the other was two point five FTEs. Was that correct? Did I write the name?
Yes, you're correct on that, but that was, uh, well, you noticed that there was one reduction, one point oh two. And then, um, it probably was due with 4K. I'm sorry, I don't have the document. And then the one nurse that was approved, uh, for the district or additional staffing. There's not a staff ratio on the analysis?
No, I, I, but the, the net difference was two point five, or I must have read.
Two point five subtract one point oh two, I guess.
Okay, I guess I subtracted.
One is the nurse position, the other would be the 4K that we contract with. And that's three sections, how many sections do we have? Three. So that would be two point five positions right there.
Okay. That's where that comes from.
Yeah. What I mentioned before is that I'll have an analysis going back to when we were as large as we were to where we are today and what changes taking place over that time.
Dave, can I ask a question? What's the, what was the cost of the four-year-old kindergarten this year?
So roughly three, I think it was three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's another burden to this budget that, um, we, we don't get state aid on money until we spend it. So we put it in rep, in expenses this year. Next year, state aid will reflect that. So it's a burden to this, that will be compensated a year from now.
And is that compensated based upon the same formula as the other, the number of students?
Um, and, yeah, yes, I would say yes. It's lumped in with all the rest of our money, but the pupil, so if it's a percentage, it's percentage. If our state aid is forty percent, it's forty percent of that three hundred thousand dollars. Or pupil count is only half for each pupil, right? Because of the halftime.
But here, so it was part of the general aid formula, the enrollment, but also in that, and remember that this district doesn't tax to the max. So, uh, yes, we can have a per pupil dollar month that hits the other calculation of about twenty-two million dollars. And we're not taking everything on the table. We're leaving ninety percent on it. So in some ways, it, it, you know, it only magnifies its amount of general aid, state aid, based upon that point five. And I think for one year, we were probably going to get a grant. I think it's for one year, about fifteen hundred per, per student.
Is that two-year?
Two-year grant. So coming, coming up for two years, that will help supplement the cost. We're still, and with the three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, you know, we're still, we'll know better with our transportation costs. We know our staffing cost, but our transportation cost, we'll have to see how that shakes out. So that's why the variance, that's, I'm not trying to give you a, you know, a non-absolute answer.
The increase in fund twenty-seven, special education?
Uh, we, well, we know in some ways, we're, we're getting higher and higher risk students. Ms. Marine was, uh, here to help explain. So we have higher need students as we move on, more people identified in special education student. You probably know that from visiting the schools. That hits it. And then as far as our categorical funding revenues in that area, they're kind, they're, they're getting close. Uh, I don't think we lost a whole lot, but I think it's mainly to do with student enrollment in that specific account. So it's a higher property transfer over the year.
Is there another FTE in there or half FTE?
We've added support staff, I know. And we did add a learning disabilities teacher at the, at WLC. But most of it is in the support staff, health aides. We're hoping that that teacher we added at the WLC, the learning disabled position is temporary. We've been implementing this RTI over the last couple of years. And there's been kind of a delay in identifying kids where all of a sudden it's, it's a bunch right now. But we think that that will level off or will, will drop off. And this may be just a temporary need for that LDP to, for that position. Did I explain that right, John?
You did.
Yeah. We think there was a pent-up demand for, uh, not demand, but a pent-up identification process that all of a sudden broke loose. And we'll get, be better at that over the years, after this first year. I, I would point out that as, as in the past, we have, uh, as we have done in the past, we have not budgeted any money towards the, um, OPEB, other post-employment benefits. Remember, we used to put hundred thousand, two hundred thousand away for future OPEB payments. There's zero budgeted for that this time, zero additional dollars. The same with our.
You haven't taken any money out of that fund anyway, have you?
We, we have not.
We paid for it as we go.
We have been paying out of our fund, general fund budget for those retirement benefits, hoping to build up the amount that's in the OPEB fund to a point where it'll be able to sustain itself.
How much do we have in there?
We had a million?
I was going to say, just a million. I was going to say eight hundred.
The other one is the, uh, we used to, we have in the past put away money for our future debt reduction. There's never a good time to buy down that debt because of the expiration dates on these bonds. So that money is set aside. We have not increased that through this budget either.
How much do we have sitting in that fund?
That's less.
Two hundred ninety-seven thousand, maybe?
And that we'll probably never use.
What we'll do is, um, when it gets closer to our. What we'll do is, when it gets closer to our, we'll do probably a budget transfer, which a Board of Education transfer that, Fund 39, once it's in Fund 39, it's in there, so we'll get approval through a special meeting or something like that, have, bring somebody like professionally, perhaps, Carol Worth, to guide us to that, and then that way we can ta- tax less than, as we get down, we don't want to have anything left in that fund, we wouldn't get down to 2019, instead of paying, as our debt drops, we can hear market.
But Carl, that's currently in our Fund 10, Fund balance?
Correct.
It's not in Fund 39.
Correct, we have to do an operating transfer to get it into, into that balance.
So are you suggesting that we get close to the end of the life of that debt, it'll just be used to pay it off?
Part of that final payment.
It seems unfair to the taxpayers for the next few years by giving that reduction to the people in 2019. I mean, I know what we're doing, or what you're trying to do, you're trying to, you know, set aside enough money to take care of these things, but all of a sudden, when you get to 2018 or 19, you've got all these funds, and those monies have come from taxpayers for the last six years, and I'm not sure that's fair.
Maybe we'll be in a position to give them some back.
But I think what Steve's, your, your point is, some people won't be here to get that back, because they paid and maybe don't live here, or whatever, yeah, so, I mean, as we get closer and closer, and we have all these little funds, um, and we're paying more and more on this debt.
Actually, we're paying less and less on the debt as you go to, next year we substantially drop the debt, it's kind of plateaued now as the refinancing.
I'm just talking about what you're doing with the taxes. I mean, every single year, and then you, now we start talking about these little funds again, and, and then you say, well, when we get to 2019, we'll give it all back, or put it back in the general fund, so there's going to be a windfall in 2019 for all the taxpayers, while all of us now are paying more, is that correct?
I'm really not sure if you're questioning.
Well, I think what, what he's getting at is, if, if that idea didn't work, I remember years ago when the board said, let's put money aside for future debt reduction, when it becomes a good time to do that, and our bond council is saying, there really isn't a good time to do that, why couldn't we allocate that, I think it's more 200,000, we'll have to look at what, what portion of our fund balance is designated for that, why couldn't we allocate that, say, this year, towards all our debt payment?
And reduce what we need?
That would do it.
Yeah, well, that would do the same thing.
Yeah, right.
Do we have the ability to do that with those funds, you can play with them?
Well, it was set aside for future.
That's a wrong, that's the wrong term.
Well, hey, I'm telling, like it is, it's almost 8:30.
I know.
Set aside for future debt reduction, that was the, and that's what we'd be doing if you're buying down the debt.
But we can.
Well, we're buying.
Time.
We're, we're buying down debt by making the payment, or using to make the payment.
And if you do that?
You're really not buying down the debt, you're just transferring.
Right. Yeah, we're making it a payment instead of a future payment.
But if that, if that account didn't exist at all right now, that money was just used for the debt payment over time, or tax relief somehow, what difference would that make in terms of our security, anything?
Well, it would probably reduce our, our bond rating, and when we go to, if we went to markets recall, like we did a few years ago, to call our debt, that healthy fund balance is a, is a substantial Moody's, Moody's rating analysis.
But that is.
We'd have to run it through perhaps, you know, certainly smarter people than I.
You can't, you can't get any less interest on bonds, we already are as, down as far as we can. Plus, that would be only if we were going to borrow more money, correct? Between now and the 19, between now and the 2019, doesn't look like we would be borrowing anything for any big project.
Are, are you suggesting we consider taking the 267,000, dividing it over the next three years, or four years, to get us to the?
I'm, no, I'm, I'm just saying, we've got that money there, and all we're doing is, we've got all these little funds for rainy days.
We have all these little funds there, and there's.
Well, if, if I asked, how much is put away in these funds, how much is it?
There are two funds, one, one, and let me remind you, the board made a decision to make, create these funds.
Based on the recommendation, and by that time, that was, you know, that was a long time, but now all of a sudden, we're getting down close to four, what, four years?
2019.
Five years.
Five years, I mean, we, we don't have to look out 10 years.
Right, but I'm with you, maybe we can use this money to assist in a, in a payment.
Or, we didn't keep, not a payment, I think we, we just don't need as much money, that's what I'm saying.
And that's what I think Dave is saying, he's saying, transfer whatever portion the board decides out from that, we quote unquote, reserve for lack of other term, into.
In lieu of.
In lieu of taxes.
For that money.
Yes. So in other words, that we don't have to ask as much for, for the current tax levy, and I think.
I'll go back to my original question, are you suggesting that we take that roughly 267,000, or whatever that amount is, divide it over the next four years, or five years budgets, to reduce ultimately the taxes by those amounts over the next five years?
I'm not suggesting anything.
Well, that, that's how it would be, that's one way of implementing your suggestion, the other way is taking it all off this year, however, then just know that next year, it's going to have to go up to make up for that.
Why?
300,000, because the payment's still going to be the same, it's 3 million this year, let's just round numbers, 3 million this year, we use that reserve, 300,000 of it, so our payment is, we're going to tax now for 2.7 million to make that payment. Next year, our payment's still 3 million, now we've got to tax 3 million to make that payment.
But we also heard earlier that in our budget overall, we had some other areas such as the 4K, that we might recoup some of the money that, in this budget, that will come back approximately the same amount, 300,000, so that difference was.
It's a percentage of the 300,000.
Okay, a percentage of 300,000, but I mean, there might be other, other ways in which that would be, and maybe the Affordable Care Act may not come into play, so that amount would be approximately, could be approximately the same.
We know, we know the Affordable Care Act is going to come into play, it's a law of the land, so we know by 2000, July 2000, that our budget will increase for the, for that 15, 16 school year, if that were to increase, let's say by 300,000 dollars, in a matter of time.
Kind of like it's happened for the last two or three years.
So there's, you know, it's probably timing, perhaps.
And it hasn't, we've, we've been good stewards.
We have, but we are also going to be recognizing increase in rates, starting in roughly November of this year, for most plans, I can't say specifically ours.
We have been told that every year since I've been on the board.
Well, because the Affordable Care Act has not been in place every year since you've been on the board.
It's a different animal.
We've never put money aside for that until the Affordable Care Act. Last year was the first time we put 200,000 aside in case we have to implement that during this current budget year.
And there were some things in the insurance, we got discounts for certain things that were one-time discounts, where they're not, I can't remember what it was called.
I don't know if there were one-time discounts, we had reductions in rates because of, oh, it was the WA, you're right, the WA.
I can't think of the term.
Had a pot that they had to distribute among the participants.
And that was.
Remember, to bring our rates down.
I can't, regardless, but it did give us a one-time.
The lawsuit, the lawsuit.
Oh, the R credit.
The R credit, yes. Yep, that was. I just want to address Pat's question, I, the 300,000 that we're paying for the 4K, and then the additional state aid that we'll get because of that a year down the road, that's, to me, that amount of money is part of the entire budget, I'm not, I don't want to sit here today and say, that 100,000, when we get that increase, is going to go for that fund right now, I, I can't make that promise, not on that amount of money, this money we're talking about is already set aside earmarked for that, so I, I'm not going to make a promise, or I, I can't do that, that we'll use it that way. But going back to this question, then, we right now have that money in there, and if you looked how much it is?
I was trying to search for a hundred and five, actually, but it's really.
But I, I don't quite understand if it's a, if it's part of a 3 million dollar payment for the debt reduction, there's approximately 300,000 in there, so we budgeted 2.7 this year and had that 300,000, make three, well, the next year, where does the 300,000 come from?
We have to tax for it, it's a 3 million dollar tax again next year.
So we put 2.7 and then three aside, I don't, why, why, I mean, I don't quite understand how that's.
We've, our, our payment is 3 million a year.
Okay.
Okay, this year, we're budgeting 3 million for that, the suggestion is drop that to 2.7.
Okay.
Use the 300, use the 300,000 to make the rest of that payment, bring it up to 3 million.
But isn't that part of our budget?
Well, just let me finish this, so now we're paying three, we're paying, we're taxing for 2.7 million, supplementing that with the existing 300,000.
Okay.
Next year, our bill is 3 million again, so we got taxed for 3 million.
So we want to.
So somewhere along the line that's going to come into play and help us, and somewhere, if we use it, it's going to stop, and then we have.
Right, my suggestion is, we do spread it over a number of years, so we don't have that big change, you know, because right off the bat, it's going to be, how much did you say was?
289.
So, okay, so 300,000, I'd rather spread that out over a couple of years, rather than have a big drop and then a big increase again in five years.
It's not fair to the taxpayers.
Well.
The pay, the taxpayers that are paying now, it's not fair to them.
Well, it's not fair to those of us who paid over the last 25 years and are no longer paying taxes either, you know, that's the luck of the draw.
It's all relative, it's, and it's doing business. And I, you know, I think the one thing that hasn't been said here is that we've been really frugal with how we've spent, we've kept the tax rate low, we've done everything we can, like you said, to be good stewards, it's, it's not like we've been flagrant, so, you know, I'm sure, living in this community for 36 years or whatever, we've been paying taxes for 36 years, and I, that's part of being part of a community.
But see, the issue becomes, in five years, or six years, or whatever you're saying, what happens to the tax rate then?
Well, except that we know.
Well, now, wait a minute, I, I, I just need, I need to know, you know, I mean, all of a sudden, we don't have to pay 3, 3 million dollars.
Correct.
What does that do to the tax rate?
Well, in today's, drops it by 20% if it were to happen today, so.
So we go back down to the levy roughly that we were at five years ago.
Right. But Steve's suggestion, I think, is that if you, if it was dropped every year, let's just use a five-year window, or if it was dropped a little bit each of the next five years, that would help each of, all of the taxpayers now till we get to that, and, and then when it dropped, it won't be that significant, it'll still be a drop, but basically for the next five years, all of the taxpayers basically will have had a little bit of help, if you will, from having that rate go up.
There was basically the board's decision years ago, when they financed the, the wonderful high school and the renovation projects, they put together, and that was your original mitigation plan, one of those slides mitigated, because there was, when the project came in, and I believe it came in a little bit less, so what happened is there's, there is a little, when you roll over money to pay your debt service, you need that because of how timing, you needed some fund balance to pay that debt each year, and I mentioned it was paid in October, so the board decided, well, we have too much in our fund balance in that area, so they, they decided to put a structure of a mitigation plan to equalize those payments, to neutralize, well, we're not going to, we're going to take X one dollars less each year, so I think that's similar to what perhaps.
What I would suggest is you come back to us with our payments are not constant, we're saying it's 3 million until it's all paid out, that's not true, it is going down a bit, come back to us with what would bring us to an equal level throughout by using the 280,000.
Some, sooner or later, that 3,000 is going to disappear off the chart, off the, off the books, along with the rest of the debt, whether it's in five years or whether it starts to go now.
That's what it's designated for.
That's what it's designated for.
Right, right.
And the board decided some years ago, probably around 2014 years ago, I guess, or maybe before that.
No, this is well after that.
Oh, it was after that?
Dave Erickson was actually one of the board members.
But still, a number of years ago, this board can say, well, it's getting close enough, now it's time to. 33 million dollars is what we started with, wasn't it? I mean, that was a scary, scary amount of money, and, but we're getting to the point where we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and again, I think, I think it's unfair to wait and give all of that money to the people that are there five years from now, and I would at least like to see some kind of mitigation.
So does Steve's recommendation result, address that?
Yeah.
I think it does, but not to the extent that you would be hoping for, because quite honest, no, I'm, I'm being very direct on this, because quite honestly, the amount that that's going to supplement is not going to, the only other option is to cut the spending.
But if it, if it just doesn't increase the taxes, I mean, if doing it this way, if it just doesn't increase everybody's tax.
I understand.
I mean.
That's why I guess we're going to have to come up with some numbers.
It's still going to increase, it's just.
Not necessarily.
Smaller amount.
Well, that's what we'll find out, yeah.
But the reason, like Betty said, that we've been so successful is because we've planned for that rainy day, and, you know, we didn't know that we'd have to do all these safety things, we don't know what's going to come up, our high school will be, what, 15 years old, or, you know, the WLC will be 30 years old, so we still have to think about that and, and plan, if enrollments keep going down, and costs go up, and aid goes down, and, you know, we still got to run our schools, so I don't think we can anticipate that everything's going to be exactly the same as it is now.
What, what makes sense about what Steve has suggested is that money has to be used for.
Which Steve?
Either one, that money has to be used for debt reduction.
I'll, I'll let you have it, that's fine, you can take credit for it.
So we, we can't say that 300,000, we'll save it in case the roof goes bad, that wouldn't be debt reduction, it has to be used for debt reduction, so it's not like we can use it for something else.
But the issue.
The question is, when do you, when do you apply it?
But can you, can you pay the debt down?
No.
I don't think you can.
I, I say debt reduction, but I'm saying less.
Taxed in pre-reduction.
For other stuff.
No, less tax for the debt payment, debt payment's 3 million, we're going to take this, definitely is 3 million for the next five years, we're going to take this 300,000 and apply 60,000 each year to that payment, so that we don't have to tax 3 million, we tax 2 million, 940,000 instead.
Correct. Each year.
Right. And that's not a, 3 million isn't a constant, but that's.
Correct. It's probably about $15 for every tax, tax bill.
I want my check, not paying taxes, so I just want a check.
You are, you're right.
Yeah, I just wanted to be fair, it's just, I, I think, I think it's a fairness issue, only because I think we're close enough, we're secure enough, we can, and it has to use for debt reduction, so let's reduce to that each year, for a few years, and it'll be, everybody can say, well, we, we've done what we can to keep taxes, tax rate, the bill rate as low as possible.
We will look at that tomorrow.
And the debt will be getting, it's going in this direction, you know, in three years, it'll be like 2.1. it would be like two point nine, two point eight, so, coupled with that, it would be with the sixty thousand, whatever it comes out to annually, it would be even greater than that one.
It was your fault.
I would like to talk about the other piece of that fund balance, that's the OPEB, other post-employment benefits. With a million there, our payments, we've had a number of teachers go through retirement, go through the, they're in their first, second, third, or fourth year collecting that post-employment Perhaps by next year, we can start drawing off of that million as well, and take that expense out of our Fund Ten, because that million dollars will project it out, but that will last for quite a while to making those payments. So, that's why we decided not to build it up this year, continue one more year out of our general fund, and then start looking at drawing down from our fund balance.
How much do we pay every year for those benefits?
Well, it depends on how many teachers are out, and it's, it's tiered, because they get for four years, so, each year, I don't know, you've got that chart to put together, I think we're at around sixty thousand dollars a year?
Well, with sick leave and everything, we're at close to two hundred thousand, if you add the, the new T's and the sick leave payout, and then the four-year contribution, I think, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand.
Annually?
Yeah, yeah, it's a moving target.
Do, and that's what we're-
Pay as we go.
Paying for the four years, four hundred dollars-
Each year, each year.
Pardon?
Because it's, it's-
But my suggestion is that we're through that bubble of retired teachers, that amount is going to come down proportionally, because we'll have fewer teachers out collecting retirement, and by then, by next year, and even better the year after that.
Pat's agreed, way you did it. Forty years will be fine after that. But, but the other component of that, as much as we hate to say it, but the reality is, with our district shrinking in size, of course, the numbers of staff members over time, will, eligible for that will also be reduced, which would bring the number down, I mean, it has to, as far as average, so.
This could be a record meeting, actually, three meetings. Was that your goal?
No, I think I, I think we, this was a good, good discussion.
You didn't even bring up the other, the other, Steve said that's the only other option, or someone said that, there is another option.
Oh, no.
I decided I didn't recommend that. So, if nobody heard, they don't have to pick up on it.
Which would be extending our debt, refinancing, extending it out another ten, fifteen years.
Yeah, the trouble is, what's the interest rate going to be? I don't think we can get a-
That idea didn't come from me.
I said, what's the option? I didn't say I was supporting it as an option.
We'll have some new numbers for you on October twenty-eighth, and that'll be our budget here, and then we'll take a look at them. Even at that time, if there's some last-minute changes, they can be made and adopted.
That's usually a fifteen-minute meeting.
This, this is where the bulk of our discussion takes place. For reasons like this, we can make these adjustments, time to figure, think about them, and put them in place. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
I'll turn it on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?